All right, at six o'clock. Please help me with the blessing, the implication. Lord, thank you for all the blessings you give us on a daily basis. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the people in Hawaii and in Santa Fe, Texas. Please give us the patience and the understanding to come together as a community to do the right thing and protect our kids. Please protect our first responders and especially our military. Lord, I also ask that you bless all of my colleagues and their families. Lord Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
If you'll stand for pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
How's it going, guys?
Hello.
Well, the mayor went out of town, so y'all get me, okay? If I can have the students from Texas Scholars step up. I'd like to read a proclamation to y'all. Thank you so much for...
Oh, you have their names?
Good, 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 okay. All right, give these kids a round of applause, guys. They have been donating a lot of time and volunteering their hard work, and I'm sure it's doing a lot of good for them because it also helps build what they're going to do in the future for their community. So, thank you for your hard work, guys. The City of Odessa Proclamation, whereas the Texas Scholar Program is designed to encourage students to pursue a higher level of course study to be qualified when entering the workforce. And whereas the Exeter County Independent School District participates in this workforce development program, which helps students understand that good, well-paying jobs are awarded to those who are prepared themselves by obtaining a sound academic education. And whereas students in the program volunteer for local nonprofit, religious, or charitable organizations. And whereas volunteering develops teamwork and communication skills, builds networking opportunities, and provides a sense of achievement. And whereas the Odessa Chamber of Commerce, ECISD, businesses and organizations sponsor Texas Scholars for our leaders of tomorrow. And whereas the academic year, 418 students were enrolled in Texas Scholars and completed 13,218 volunteer hours. And since the inception of the program in 1997, there has been a total of 272,238 volunteer hours contributed to the community. Now therefore, I, Filberto Gonzalez, by the virtue of the authority vested in the mayor pro tem of the City of Odessa, do hereby proclaim May 22nd, 2018 as Texas Scholar Day. And I think you have their names? Do you want to name the names?
We are going to recognize those who are here. Good evening, I'm Renee Earls, I'm with the Odessa Chamber of Commerce. The Texas Scholars Program is a program that is overseen by the Chamber. Debbie Leib, who is our photographer tonight, is the VIP's chair. She takes care of all the volunteers with ECISD, so she makes sure that these students do all of the hours that they have claimed to do, and we are so thrilled to be able to recognize these students tonight and their families. This is quite a commitment. And a little bit about Texas Scholars. In the ninth grade, they have to do at least five hours. As a sophomore, at least 10 hours. As a junior, 15 hours. And then as a senior, 20 hours of volunteer service. So it prepares them to then continue on as a community volunteer. And we have some of those today with us who were the top student at their school. So if you're here with us, please wave your hand. From New Tech Odessa, we have the ninth grader, Zaira Corales, and I apologize if I've pronounced your name wrong, with 100 hours. Is Zaya here? From the 10th grade, Aslyn Hernandez, with 160 hours. 11th grade, Haley Zunt, with 225 hours. And then 12th grade, through the time period of 249 hours total, Danilo Carroll Anus. Amazing. And again, remember, for a freshman, they only had to do five hours, so... Then at Odessa High School, our ninth grader, Addison Abalos, with 75 hours. 10th grader, Kaylee Duran, with 190 hours. An 11th grader, Natalie Benavides, with 273 hours. And then the senior graduating from Odessa High with the most hours for 390 is Rogelio Torres. From Permian High School, we have ninth grade, Sheena Kessivan, with 167 hours. 10th grader, Haley Douglas, with 138 hours. 11th grader, Mia Abia, with 75 hours. And then I have two students from 12th grade, Chastity Guevara, with 190, and Nicole Miller and Domingo, also with that many, so congratulations. Two more schools here representing Falcon, Early College High School, ninth grader, Pasadena Wooton, with 28 hours. In the 10th grade, Wendy Hernandez, with 295 hours. 11th grade, Jasmine Alalong, with 249 hours. And they don't have a senior class because they just started three years ago, so next year we'll have a senior from there. And then Odessa College, Tex High School, for the ninth grade, we had a tie for three ways. We had three students do eight hours, Corbin Cummings, Kalube Cummings, and Mark Ornalis. Obviously, obviously twins here. Yes, definitely. And then 10th grade, Sophia Rutledge, with 123 hours. And finally, our 11th grader, with 224 hours, Michaela Welch. And we even had an update, since you did the proclamation, we've added a few more hours, so we had a total of 13,304 hours done this year by 421 students. And that brings the entire total to over 272,000 hours since the program started in 1997. So very impressive. Thank you, students.
I think we need to take a picture with these guys. I need you to move in. No, no, you come here. Congratulations, guys.
They're gonna have to move in.
Doc can take me out later and put the mayor's.
Come in behind them.
Come in behind, taller people.
Families, you can take pictures. So get closer together, and a few of you in the front. Okay, I'm almost there. Switch up a little closer. All right, here we go. Oh, no, it's not gonna click.
It's a little bit cranky.
Oh, there we go. Let's try this.
Now you know why moms get pics of them, right? Congratulations, guys. Give them a round of applause. Renee? Okay, and now if I can have Chief John Alvarez and Assistant Chief, Mr. Hubbard? Mr. Alvarez?
You guys can stay if you want.
They get more hours?
This is your government, so you should come in and participate.
All right, guys. I've been given the honor of reading a proclamation and the City of Odessa proclamation, whereas the emergency medical services is a vital public service in Texas, and whereas the emergency medical services personnel of the Odessa Fire Rescue are highly trained individuals who provide immediate and emergency care to injured or ill persons. And whereas the emergency services are often split-second decisions that ultimately determine life or death situations. And whereas the EMS personnel also care for the community by teaching injury prevention to citizens to lessen the occurrence and the severity of the injuries. Now therefore, I, Filberto Gonzalez, by the virtue of the authority vested in the mayor pro tem of the City of Odessa, do hereby proclaim May 20th through the 26th, 2018 as Emergency Medical Services Week throughout the City of Odessa and encourage citizens to recognize these outstanding men and women dedicated to the pre-hospital medical care for the citizens of our community. Thank you so much.
You don't have nothing?
Just a few, just a few quick facts. Just want to let everybody know, Odessa Fire Rescue is a leading pre-hospital emergency provider in the state of Texas. To be a firefighter paramedic now, it requires 66 hours of college credit. The City of Odessa is fortunate to have over 100 paramedics currently employed. EMS is over 85% of our 911 calls we respond to, so thank you. We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Phillip? Phillip? We need to put Phillip in a chair or something. All right, now, and we move on to the consent agenda?
Move for approval?
Second. I have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, what, how do you say, all?
Oppose.
All opposed? None. It passes unanimously. All right, other councilor action. Consider approval of a professional services agreement with Kimley Horn for the transportation master plan. Mr. Hal Philman?
Good evening, council. This is for the approval of a professional services agreement with Kimley Horn. We went out for an RFQ for this transportation master plan. They were the sole submitter. What this transportation master plan hopes to cover is looking at our development standards and reviewing how we currently maintain our streets, if we're doing the proper maintenance at the proper time to get the most life out of our pavement. It's going to come up with, like I say, those best practices for operations and maintenance. It's also going to come up with a capital improvements list so that we can identify what roads need the action and at what time. It's also going to look at strategies of dealing with the local MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization. And the final component of this traffic study is to look at grant. And basically, we're talking about grant between Kermit Highway and I-20, looking at that corridor and seeing how to make it more pedestrian-friendly downtown, that sort of thing. So that's what the transportation master plan is. On the agenda item here, it's for $445,500. We've also done a supplemental $15,000 project to them to look at downtown parking, and they are currently doing that right now. They wanted to do it right now before school gets out to look at worst-case traffic patterns. So that's what this transportation master plan is.
Any questions from council?
I love the way he presented. It's entertaining. It is. I mean that in a good way.
Norma, we do have one person that wanted to speak, but I have a question before that happens. This is the one that's going to actually take the whole loop system, right, and study it at the same time, not as predicted before as far as doing one for the east side and then one for the west side?
No, sir. The loop study is going to be handled completely different by TechDOT. So TechDOT is working on the loop study. It's not part of this transportation master plan. Their current, TechDOT is, as it turns out, they're also contracting with Kimley Horn to do that loop study.
Okay, well, that's maybe where I got confused.
Yeah, it's the same consultant.
Don't put the word "transportation" in there and then... Just joking, thank you.
We do intend to, on the MPO portion, touch on the loop and those areas as priorities for the city, but the actual loop study is, TechDOT's leading that because the loop is a TechDOT-controlled road.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Kerr. I believe we have Mr. Dallas Kennedy has comments. You have three minutes, and please state your name and your address.
Dallas Kennedy, I live at 43 Iberg. I'll make this quick. I did a quick Google search today. I saw that in November 2014, we gave Kimley Horn $848,100 to study just expanding East University from Hancock to Grandview. In 2016, we gave them $850,200 for Water Waste, Water Master Plan. 2016, 2017, we gave them another $322,000 to buy the properties and work on that expansion of university that we'd already given them $848,000 to do. They helped finish that project. This year, we've given them another $15,000 to study parking downtown. Nobody parks downtown. Nobody's getting run over downtown. They're getting run over 42nd, they're getting run over on Andrews Highway, but people aren't getting run over, pedestrians aren't getting run over downtown. Our taxes have been raised, our property taxes are raised, and then we brought in a huge, what, 63% raise in sales tax income. That's great. I'm glad the city has the money, but I think we can find a better place to spend it. Because I can already tell you what Kimley Horn is gonna say. They're gonna say that, yes, we need to expand Grandview, we need to work on the loop because we've got 75 mile-an-hour speed limit in an area that's almost residential now. They're gonna tell you that Andrews Highway needs work, they're going to tell you that 42nd needs work. And then they're going to tell you, for $800,000 per road, we'll give you another study, and then after we do that study, you can pay us $300,000 per road to buy the property and do the other stuff we need. I think maybe it's time to tell them, you can do this one for free, or we'll give you $100,000 to do this one. Because we've already given them $2 million in the last four years to do studies for us. And we're about to give them another $455,000, $455,000 for them to do another study, to come and tell us that they need to do more studies on the roads that they study so that we can give them a cool million per road to expand. I just think there's a better use for the money. Some of our EMS folks are here, they could use a raise. Some of our street workers could use a raise, our waste management people could use a raise, or you could give me my money back on my property tax. But I just don't think that they need another $450,000 to do this study to tell us, give us more money. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Well, the man does have a point. Are we, are we just selecting Kimberly Horn, or are we bidding it out?
Okay, Mr. Kerr?
The process for selecting, for hiring engineers is an RFQ process. By law, you don't bid them. It's state law that you hire the most qualified persons to do the work, then you negotiate a price with the one that's most qualified. If you don't come to an agreement on a price for the work, then you can move to the next most qualified. So we issued an RFQ, just as we do on...
RFQ, good.
I'm sorry, it's a request for qualifications, sorry. And so we did issue the request for qualifications on this one. We were surprised that we received a single proposal. The proposal did partner with Kimley Horn, with Park Hill Smith &amp; Cooper, which are two firms that we see out in this area a fair bit with traffic and transportation. They partnered up, they didn't individually submit. Kimley Horn was the lead, and so they were the only submitter that we have. So we have no other selection, per se, on that request for qualifications. We have found that on the university project, I think from staff's perspective, we found them to be a very good consultant for us. They've worked enormously well with the public. They helped us, I think, a great deal on that project. Their design has been good. We found, I found their work to be quite, quite strong. One of the things that, where TechDOT is talking to them about the loop study right now is that they are qualified under TechDOT's selection criteria, they are used on major projects with TechDOT as well. There are other firms that are good firms to use in terms of this work, but Kimley Horn is the one that has submitted with us with Park Hill Smith &amp; Cooper.
So why do you think that is, that they are the only people submitting?
I'm not really sure. I mean, we did post it and advertise it, just as we always do.
How do we advertise it?
The, well, part of this thing may have to tell you a little better, but we send it out to the entities that also advertise for us, say, in terms of plans, rooms, and things like that, but we put it in newspapers and we post it on the standard processes for trying to find firms. And we do send out invitations to firms as well, so...
And they're the only people that replied?
They were the only response that we had, yes.
Don't we also have an estimate that is prepared by the engineers within the city itself to kind of estimate what that cost would be, where it's just not something in the dark? Don't we have a good idea that this may cost this much or whatever?
Yes, sir. Well, when we put the study together, we, or back when we asked for funding, we asked for about a half, $500,000 to do the study. And so that was an amount that we figured would be applicable in this type of case.
And it was budgeted, sir?
Yes, sir, it's budgeted.
How do you guys come up with that figure?
Well, you kind of poll around to kind of see what others have seen, what they may have experienced. We do ask consultants as well, a lot of times.
Others, others being...
Cities and things like that. Yes, sir.
So, thanks for coming up, and I appreciate your word, your comment. I would, I'm just kind of taking what you said, what all is involved in the study? I mean, to kind of give us a little background to educate everyone here, exactly what goes into the study, what are we getting for the money that we spend? I think that's kind of what you're kind of looking for also, is to see, so many times we just, we read in the paper, we're gonna spend X amount of dollars, and we're gonna, we're gonna do this and do that, and there's more really that goes into it than just spending the money in order to do it efficiently and all. And I know that sometimes it looks like, man, we're just throwing money out the window, but...
Yes, I understand. Yes, sir, it is hard to get a grasp on these types of things, especially if you don't deal with them real often and that type of thing. But the real point of master plans, and we have been involved in several master plans right now, as he mentioned, we are doing water, completing our Water Waste Water Master Plan. We have a, this master plan, a transportation master plan, we're looking at a drainage master plan, and we're looking at, I think there's one more, I'm just losing track of it, but anyway, these master plans, the point is to plan out in the future and see what all we're needing to address, and to focus on what we do to try and maximize the dollars to the best effect. In other words, the streets, right now, we budget each year to do seal code on the streets, and we do rejuvenation on residential streets. And we do it kind of based on how much money is readily available. But if we look at how often do we really need to seal code? Do we need to seal code as often as we do, or maybe not? So then this analysis will allow us to review what other communities are doing and how streets are performing and behaving. We will evaluate our own streets right now, so we will look at them to see what is the condition of our roads, so that we know if roads are starting to fail on us, what kind of remedies we need to employ, and so we can plan a little bit of our budgets to make the best effect. One of the things that, in terms of infrastructure for cities, and you will see this nationwide, this has been a national problem that has been established, or at least recognized since the 90s. We put things in the ground, say, water lines, I'll mention that just because it's an easy one to talk about. We start putting water lines in the ground decades ago, and then you don't see them anymore. The water comes out at your house, and you don't worry about it anymore. We have hundreds of miles of cast iron water lines in the ground. Cast iron corrodes and deteriorates over time, especially with the types of water that we use. So eventually, these lines are now 50, 70, we have lines that are 70-plus years old. These lines are not going to last, they are going to fail. If we don't start identifying them and trying to address them, they will catastrophically fail. And when they do, it costs you magnitudes of cost in terms of trying to repair them. I'll, as many of you know, and I only mention this because it's an experience of mine, but I worked in San Angelo for many years. Not many years before I moved over here, we had a 30-inch line fail in San Angelo. That line shut down a third of the city with water, without water, for about a week. There was a massive response. We spent many nights up working on that problem, and so that was a catastrophic type of failure. So one of the things is, these plans are to try and keep these types of failures from occurring. We have to kind of make a good plan of where we're gonna go. So that's dealing with, say, aging and infrastructure. We also want to look at what our development conditions are. Are our streets being built the best way and the most efficient and effective way so that they'll last a long time? You know, you can just seal code, if you look at county standards, which work for rural areas where your roads may not be quite as well-traveled, but you put down a seal code, that type of pavement won't last as long, especially under our conditions. So... So what do we, we just wanna make sure we compare ourselves with some other places and say, are we doing a good job? Um, we look at our future growth. So where are the people starting to build and those things, so that we can make sure that we are building the roadways, or have the roadways capable of being constructed to handle the traffic that would be generated by that? Um, the metropolitan, I'm getting, I may, if I'm getting too long, just cut me off. The Metropolitan Planning Organization is an arm of the Texas Department of Trans- Transportation. It is a regional body. Uh, it covers, uh, Sun, Midland, Odessa, the counties, Hector and Midland, as well as part of Martin County. This body administers, um, the funds, or helps us prioritize the use of funds that are brought down from Tech dot. We're talking millions and millions of dollars. These are the ones where we look to prioritize what overpass do we need to address? Where do we need a new overpass? Fifty-second, fifty-sixth, Yukon, New, North Three Eighty-five? And often, there is a bit of a competition, okay? It's natural. Uh, Midland has priorities as well, very important priorities, and we have priorities also. We want to make sure that we're putting our priorities up appropriately, so that we're not, you know, if we don't address our priorities and demonstrate what our priorities are appropriately, they will not compete well for those dollars. Uh, often, those dollars go all the way down to Austin for competition across the state. So we want to learn from this consultant who works with Tech dot and does this type of work around the state. What message do we need to use?
What consultant are you speaking of?
Kim Lee Horn.
Okay.
Um, there, there, again, there are other consultants that work with the state.
Do they have engineers that work for them as well? Do they have, they have engineers that work for the company also?
Uh, Kim Lee Horn? Oh, yes, sir. Uh, it, it is...
I would, I, what I, I, I feel the same way about taxes. I, I, I can tell you, I wouldn't be sitting here for ten dollars a night if it, it wasn't that, I, I would have a little bit of a one, a one person, a one person saying what goes on. But it, it, a, a lot of times, you look at the big picture, the city couldn't afford to hire people to do this. It's not ca- it's just not cost-effective and, and, I don't know, I, I know you went out and worked on your car and repaired it and tore up three things that you wouldn't have tore up if you'd have hollered at this mechanic, said, "Hey, God, man, what I need to do here?" And, and, and I'm not belittling your, your deal, but that's kind of what goes into, into this. Yeah, two million dollars is a, is a lot of money to spend, and I, I understand about the firm just being one firm, but you see, there's just some people that don't wanna, they'd, they'd rather go to Dallas and get ten million to do one study, you know? And so we, we compete for every kind of job we have, we, we compete for emergency medicals, fire, police, you know, we compete for people like that all the time. But it, it's a lot, it's a lot of money, but in the, in the big scope of the picture, when you look at what you're, what you're doing, what you're trying to accomplish, Odessa's growing huge, and, and, uh, these guys know that I don't wanna spend any more money than we have to spend.
Yes, sir.
And, and so that's, that's kind of the way. But I'll tell you what, I would encourage you, the first time a position opens in your area where you can sit up here in this chair and look and get into the, to how money's spent, man, it's a...
Absolutely.
It's a great thing to do. I can tell you, it's eye-opening. I'll promise you, eye-opening. Really is.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes, sir.
Do you think, um, consistently having one contractor puts the city at risk?
We certainly would hope not. We, uh, try to make sure that whomever we select should be qualified. Um, I think in this case, Kim Lee Horn is certainly qualified. I don't see where they aren't qualified. Um, the, uh, but we try not to select...
Well, I'm speaking about in a sense of competition. If I have no competition, if Coach just put me in the game and no one, no competition, then am I giving my best...
Yes, sir.
...quality of work?
Yes, sir. No, we are not trying to select only Kim Lee Horn. I guarantee you that. Um, they have done some great work with us on transportation. Uh, they are doing a water and wastewater master plan for us, but we are using Corolla engineers for our water quality improvements project, because they are more, um, what we deem as qualified for that type of project. Um, we, we have no, we're not intending to just hire a single firm for everything. Yes, sir.
When is the, um, when's the last time you guys surveyed the other contractors you guys sent information to? You said something about...
Talk to the other consultants.
You guys, you give notification in the paper, of course, and then you also send out, um, I guess, uh, solicit, solicit for bids or whatever, I don't know exactly what.
Yes, sir.
But when is the last time that you guys sent a survey to them, asking them what it is that we could do for them, and what it is that, you know, they have issues or questions about?
We don't typically, um, survey them in terms of that type of, uh, question, you know, what can we do for you? Um, they generally come to us, and they'll stop by on routine basis. Uh, we have, uh, many firms that stop by and talk to us, or when we go to conferences and things like that, we will see many firms and discuss with them what their qualifications are. Um, the, uh, but we don't necessarily send a survey to them to ask them things. We will, when we put out the request for qualifications, we will send out, uh, notices that this request for qualifications is out, and that, to, uh, to hopefully get more firms to apply. Um, we have had numerous ones in most of our cases, um, but, but this case was one where we ended up with, with a single proponent.
Could I get a list of those people that you guys sent to...
Yes, sir. Should be able to. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question as far as, um, what is the lifespan of the study? So we, you know, we're paying so much money, and then five years from now, we're gonna have to do another study about the work that was done this time, and then what we need from now on? Or is this going to be a cure-all? You know, for ten years? You know, are, are we gonna get our money's worth out of this?
Yes, sir. Uh, they are not cure-alls, they are living documents. Uh, they are a plan, and so they are, they do change. Uh, is, uh, what the consultant, uh, generally, you would, um, like to have the plan updated every five years. That's a general rule. Um, is it done? Often not. I think the last time we had a study like this done was probably, uh, my understanding is late nineties, uh, early two thousands. Um, the fact is that Odessa is growing in a different area than it was at that time. And so what the consultants do is they evaluate where we're seeing the growth, because that's where you are pressed to do your infrastructure. If the, if the movement is in this direction, then we start to do infrastructure in that way. One of the things that we will be coming to you before long here is, um, is a, a draft on a, our water and wastewater master plan. We're seeing growth out in the, in the west, uh, southwest areas. Um, we're seeing growth up around the Kermit Highway area. We're seeing growth, of course, in northeast and the east, and so the plan addresses some of those areas. And we want to put that before you, so you can see if you think that this is an agreeable type of approach.
So is Kimberly Horn involved in that process as well?
Yes, it's a different arm of Kimberly Horn, but yes, Kim Lee Horn, yes, sir.
Okay. I, I just, you know, I'm not questioning Kimberly Horn and their ability and whatnot, but I think it's, it's a little alarming that we have only one contractor doing all of the work for the city, when there's several contractors out there who could offer, um, some, some pro, you know, to, to, to the city.
Sure.
Um, so again, it's not an attack on the company itself, but I just feel like if there's no competition, really, how, how can we measure at that point?
Yes, sir.
Where is Kimberly Horn, uh, where their satellite office is?
The, uh, the work that we're doing on university, uh, is based out of their Lubbock office. Uh, that office will be involved also in the transportation plan, but their Fort Worth office is where their primary office that will be serving the master plan.
But they have a satellite in Lubbock, and doesn't Park Hill have one in either Midland or Lubbock also?
Yeah.
I, I think that's one of the things that we need to take into consideration, is the fact that, that if they're doing business in this location, it's awful hard to find overnight stay, so the cost probably is a little bit less for them than someone that may be just headquartered in Dallas that has to come and do a study that, that requires overnight, uh, stay, transportation, et cetera, et cetera, that that, uh, prevents it probably from bidding, knowing that it's gonna be, um, out of, um, out of the area just strictly, or, or out of that number just strictly because of the situation that we do have in Odessa at this time.
Yes, sir. Yes, um, they, it, it can be difficult for them. Park Hill Smith and Cooper does have an office in Midland. Uh, they are based out of Lubbock. They have offices in El Paso and other places as well. Uh, Kim Lee Horn has offices other than the Dallas-Fort Worth and, and Lubbock area. Um, most of these firms do, they're, they, or the larger firms have bases in different areas.
If they can utilize going home at night, or whatever it might be.
Yes, sir. And, and if you don't have a familiarity for the area too, you realize that you may have a larger learning curve than others. Uh, Kim Lee Horn, because they're already working with us on university, has a little bit of a learning curve already addressed in the fact that they know the area. Um, they know us, uh, so they were certainly interested. Um, the other firms, I can't speak to what, why they did not submit, um, but, um, we did not, we did not have any others.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. I didn't mean to put you on the hot seat.
Oh, I understand. No, sir.
I, I just had to...
Very, very fair questions. I have, I appreciate it. I understand. And honestly, I'll tell you, we, we do want to try and make sure that we have a good broad perspective. It is good to have different opinions from different areas. Part of the reason that we look for in a master plan, uh, firms that may not, uh, entirely based here, but because they do experience areas, other areas, so we also get a little more broader perspective. But, uh, we certainly want to work with the firms that are here and, and, and everywhere, so...
So in short, you're saying West Texas ain't for everybody?
Well, not everybody's for West Texas, I think.
Yeah, that's true.
No, sir.
That's true. Thank you, sir. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I think we need a...
And could I get that list, please?
I'll move it, please.
Okay.
Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously? All right. Um, open to public hearing to consider approval of the request of Dr. Shanti Thangam, owner, Billy Basset, representative for original zoning of Retail One on R dash one on approximately a one-point-zero-five-two acre tract in the section seventeen, block forty-one, T dash two dash S, T and P R Y dot C O dot survey at Hector County, Texas, east side of the intersection of one-ninety-one Service Road and Rocky Lane Road, ordinance and final approval. First approval.
Yes, first approval.
First approval.
First approval.
I didn't mean to do your job there. Jump in the gun there. Sorry about that.
Good evening, council. Uh, the city mailed out five notices related to this request. Uh, we did not have any, any of these notices were returned, and we did not receive a positive or negative response. And it stated the property involved in this request is a little bit east of the intersection of Highway one-ninety-one and Rocky Lane. This site is vacant, currently designated future development, and land use in there does consist of retail development to the north. Uh, there's, uh, residential development, church development, and vacant land also in this area. Uh, the property owner in this case is Dr. Shanti Thangam. Uh, he is represented by, represented by Billy Basset and, uh, S W Howe Company, and the request is for, um, Retail One zoning, and this would facilitate, uh, light retail use on this property and related uses, and in this case, it would be a, uh, specialty gift shop and a jewelry store. So it will be a light retail-type use. Uh, the proposed land use and zoning for this property is consistent with the city's, um, future land use map. This area is considered a prime retail development area adjacent to Highway one-ninety-one. And this, that will also act as a buffer between the existing residential development to the south and the traffic corridor of Highway one-ninety-one. Uh, the retail design proposed for this property will be held to aesthetic guidelines that will include building features, landscaping, screening, buffering, and also a controlled ingress and egress to the site. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval, and be happy to answer any questions.
This is a public hearing, so if there's someone from the public that wants to speak?
Mr. Brenley, or Billy, isn't that, uh, there's a drainage close to that, right?
Yes, sir.
Drainage, it's down the west, west...
West side of that. Okay.
It's actually an easement into the property.
That's right. Great area. Yeah. Now, this property will, there's a lot of easements on there, and this would be a very good use for what they're wanting to do out there. This is actually about the only use that can be done.
Or it'll be vacant forever.
And I think, Billy, this is like the last piece of vacant property adjacent, or on one-ninety-one, so...
There's some, one more small piece to the west of the...
Yeah, encompassed by a lot of easements, so, yeah.
Yeah. Good deal. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Brenley.
Okay, seeing that no one, um, that I close the public hearing. Uh, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.